Ball meeting to order of the Brownsville Independent School District's Board of Trustees, regular scheduled board meeting held for today, November fourteenth, two thousand and six, at five thirty at the Administration Building. Will everyone please rise for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance?
Everyone's present, with the exception of Mr. Rolando Gilad, he would not be attending tonight's meeting. Is that our understanding?
Okay.
Move on to five. Recommend approving the agenda of the rescheduled regular board meeting, November, scheduled for November fourteenth, two thousand and six, with any corrections. Mr. Gonzalez.
No corrections, as submitted.
So, motion to approve.
I move to approve.
Motion to approve is our second. Motion and second to approve tonight's meeting. All those in favor, signify by raising your hands, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye motion carries. Move on to six. Recommend approving the minutes of the regular board meeting of October seventeenth, two thousand and six, the minutes of the special call board meeting of October twenty-sixth, two thousand and six, and the minutes of the special call board meeting of the November first, two thousand and six, with any corrections. Mr. Gonzalez, or anybody else?
It was flawless.
Flawless? Are you sure? Positive. Whoa, so first, we need to go on to the annals of history. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes as read. All those in favor, signify by raising your hands, say an aye.
Aye.
A motion carries. Item seven, superintendents report a conference presentation, one consideration and possible adjustment of the Thanksgiving holiday for classified employees. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, members of the board. This was a conference presentation at request of Dr. Escobedo, and what we have is that the employees, some employees, are scheduled to work that day, not all employees. Some classified employees are scheduled to work. That's part of the calendar, has been approved previously, and we have done throughout the years, and will continue to do this year. Maybe next year, we can come in and do a better job in presenting the calendar, and maybe making that a holiday at that particular time. But because it is not considered a holiday, it's considered a workday, we cannot just give it away. It's something that needs to be dealt with. However, I've already met with my program administrators, that half those people that are scheduled to work with that day, and I've asked them to flex them out, allow them to work the time, some other time during the week, the previous week, the previous days, to be able to get their eight hours in without having to come in on that particular day. Some employees choose to work that day, believe it or not, they like to work that day, so we'll leave that option also open for them if they choose to work that day. So, when we're looking at it, we're going to also allow them to take, if they want to, their personal day, or however they want to do it. They get ten days out of the year as personal days for them to use as they wish. If they want to use one particular day as a personal day and not have to work the extra hours, or work four extra hours and use only four hours of personal, then we will be able to do that. We will bring that agenda item up to you all. There's a policy that says that you must work the day before or after a holiday in order to be paid that holiday. What we will do is bring it to the board on the twenty-first to waive that policy, to allow them to be paid that holiday if they choose not to work the day afterwards on either personal leave, or non-workday, or however they choose to use it, or to make up the hours before. So, with that in mind, this is how we're going to address the decision this year. There's, not everybody's scheduled to work, some are just off, but you've got to remember that those people that are scheduled not to work, they don't get paid either. That is not a paid holiday for anybody. It's part of the calendar on one of those days that they don't work, but it's not paid. So, people like secretaries, people like teacher aides, they don't work it, but they don't get paid. They're a different, they're, how they're paid is, basically, they're paid on a twelve month basis. They work X number of days per year, some work one eighty-seven, some work two hundred, some work different, two twenty-seven, and what they do is they take their daily rate, multiply it times those days, and then divide it by twelve, so they can get twelve monthly checks. The MTs, a little bit differently, they're hourly, so they actually get paid only the days that they work, and they're scheduled to work two forty-five with two weeks paid vacation. So, they can use one of these days as their vacation days if they, if they so desire also. So, there's many ways of doing it, but we're going to work it, so they won't have to be there if they don't want to, and so nobody that doesn't want to work that day will have to work that day. So, we're going to work it out with the employees, and I have some of the directors here, and they have assured me that they will address it with their employees, so they won't have to work that day. We'll work it out.
Comments?
Sure, thank you. I understand what you say, we can't just go around giving out days as vacation days, that's not feasible. I'm going to dare and presume, I could be totally wrong, that many employees wouldn't mind sacrificing their pay for having that day off. I could be wrong, I, maybe, I don't know. I've just, from the feedback, from the little feedback that I've gotten, the priority or the concerns that they want the day after Thanksgiving to have off. Now, how did we do it like a year or two ago? Because apparently, we used to give them the Friday off. What were we doing back then?
We've never really given them the Friday off, we've allowed to flex it out.
Which is what we're going to do again?
Yes. So, I assure you that anybody that doesn't want to work that day will not have to work that day.
And that would be as of this month, this Thanksgiving, correct?
This Thanksgiving.
And then, as of next year, we're going to work with the calendar, you said?
Yes, because at one time, we're given, we have X number of holidays to give out this year, when I looked at the calendar, they were giving Labor Day off. So, they have X number of holidays. Certainly, we can look at the, at the calendar, and the board can certainly, at that particular time, opt to give another holiday if they want to. But right now, they don't have, they approve the calendar with that as a working day for those people that were scheduled to work.
Okay, excellent, you said. And just to reiterate, as of this Thanksgiving, those who do not want to work on Thursday, for the most part, with some exceptions, I'm sure, will not have to.
They will not have to work, I will give them different options, they can take a vacation day, they can take a personal day, they can choose to work more hours on Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, they can even work on Saturday, the way it starts on Saturday. So, they, all they have to do is work with their immediate supervisor, and it will be addressed appropriately. I guarantee you that.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Additional comments?
Thank you, President Lehman. Mr. Gonzalez, if we decide to give them that as a holiday, what would be the cost to the district? You have an idea?
It would run us approximately, if it was those people that are just classified, we're not even going to go into certified, because that runs into big numbers. But if we look at just classified, I believe what we have is those that are, that are, if we do all classified, it's about two-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand dollars.
Thank you.
We have to come up with.
Yes. But the way we're going to do it this year, the fiscal implication will be zero, correct?
Right.
Thank you.
So, may I interject? In the past, I think we have paid it, haven't we? In the past, maybe a few years ago, we actually paid that holiday?
There was a fiscal implication, because I know we discussed numbers, and I think the CFO at the time said that we had a million dollars to almost half a million dollars.
If we do certify everybody, yes.
So, what have we done in the past? I think we have actually paid out, that is my understanding, so.
Go ahead, Mr. Sanchez, I think you have good information.
Yes, I have the agenda item from last year, eleven fifteen, and the recommendation was to declare a paid holiday for classified employees who were scheduled to work, only.
Only.
And it was approximately seventy-five thousand dollars last year.
So, to ask Dr. Escobedo's question again, who, we're going to do the same thing we did last year?
No.
No, that's not what the superintendent is proposing.
I heard flex time, so.
Yeah, it's flex time.
So, we did pay out.
Additional money.
Last year, we did, sir.
And I think we've done that in prior years also, my understanding. But anyway, so, the employees understand, this year, all we're doing is comp time, flex time, is that the same thing?
Same time.
Comp time, I know it's comp time, flex time is?
Flex time.
You can take off in?
Not comp time, we don't have comp time.
So, you can take off another day and get paid for it? Is that basically the way it works?
Yes.
Okay, satisfactory? I just wanted to correct that we did pay out. Okay, additional comments? Okay, thank you. Move on to B, standing board agenda items two, board calendars, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, just a few items. On this coming Thursday, and I think I got two board members committed already to be here at noon on Thursday to canvass the election results, and I will not be able to be here that day, I got another commitment, but Ms. Peña will be doing the canvassing, I have two board members that will be here, so that'll be at noon, at twelve o'clock, when we will canvass the results of the elections. We have another board meeting next, on the twenty-first, which is a very important board meeting, that's the time that we reorganize and so on and so forth with the board, so it's an important board meeting. And then, of course, we have the Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving on the twenty-third, and there's a meeting that I'm asking for, and I don't know who's in charge of the technology committee meeting, technology committee, is that?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lehman?
Yes, sir.
If you would like, I would like to have a technology committee meeting on the twenty-eighth at five thirty, if at all possible.
Oh, noted.
That'll be a day that I need to have a technology committee meeting. And then, of course, on the fifth of December, we have our regular board meeting, and I believe that's, that's when the tamala is scheduled, or we're going to wait to the second board meeting? The first board meeting?
Otis, can you say tamala? I remember that. He's getting better.
Getting better on that. And of course, we're having the, a lot of Christmas activities coming in in the month of December, so we'll be forwarding any and all information, all activities are coming up to, as they come around.
The reindeer review, are we going to do that?
We have a different format that we're working on, on the reindeer review, it's going to be the fine arts department using students to do it, and then we will be doing it at Central, at the Central Auditorium, and we'll actually be taking the kids over there, and we'll be doing productions by high school students to the elementary students. Looking forward to it, I think it's something that's new and exciting for the district, and almost all the elementaries are buying into it, and so we're actually taking the students, and we're letting our fine arts students, we have a lot of talent out there in the high schools, to actually perform for the students.
We'll keep the Christmas cheer.
And I believe, what is that, that sixth, seventh, and eighth? Seventh and eighth? So, put it on your calendars, I was going to send you, as soon as we finalize it, I'll send you, send it out to you. But it'll be in that refurbished auditorium there at Central that we have.
Okay. And the toy drive, is that going to be incorporated?
Yes, Drew, can you tell us about the toy drive and the other things that we got going on?
Well, right now, we have a canned food drive going on for Thanksgiving, and that ends next week, and we've identified three local agencies that are badly in need of assistance. And for the toy drive, it starts when we get back from Thanksgiving, and we've asked all the campuses to participate, and we're hoping we can get quite a few toys, and we can incorporate also into the holiday extravaganza we have planned.
Sixth or the seventh?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. All right, go ahead, Mr. Gonzalez.
That's it.
That's it? Additional comments, questions from board members? Okay, we move on to item eight, public audience. The next item on our agenda is the public comment period. This is a time for citizens, staff, or students to provide their comments to the board. Statements and questions from the audience will not be permitted during other portions of the meetings, so please let us hear from you now if you have comments to present. To have your comments heard tonight, your name and the subject matter of your comments must appear on the sign-in sheet, which is located in the rear of the meeting room. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes to complete his or her comments. With all due courtesy, I will strictly enforce that time limit. If a group of people want to be heard on the same topic, the board asks that they designate a spokesperson to avoid needless repetition. The board has adopted rules to preclude the abuse of open form by, for example, anyone uselessly repeating the same comment, complaint, meeting after meeting. All participants must understand that if your comment, in my judgment, constitutes a complaint against the employee or officer, I will interrupt and ask you to stop and direct you to proceed where the BISD's formal grievance procedures be found in DGBA, FNG, or GF, local of our local policy. With those cautions in mind, we'll begin. First person is John Clark, miscellaneous.
Evening, members of the board, Mr. Lehman, President, Mr. Gonzalez. I'd like to say congratulations to Dr. Escobedo for your reelection, and I'd also like to say congratulations to Mr. Gonzalez on your appointment, and a thank you to Mr. Munoz for the work you've done for this district over the past three years. I don't want to stand up here a long time and go on and on, I want to just get to the point, and that is that in some way, in one way, in one aspect, this school year has not started off well for our teachers, in that it seems that the PDAS appraisal system might not be used this year as a neutral assessment of teachers' teaching abilities, but rather as some kind of instrument of harassment on teachers, apparently to inspire them to do a better job with the tax scores. I just don't think that that approach is really going to be effective in getting higher tax scores. At this point, I'm not going to go in specifics, because this issue will come up later in the year, but the teachers feel strongly that they need to be fairly appraised in the work they do, and we're asking you to please keep an eye on this process for us so that we can, we can be accurately appraised, and also to help us, support us in our teaching efforts, and perhaps use an approach that's balanced between negative incentives and positive incentives. And, you know, your teachers are working hard, and they're really trying to deliver those tax scores for you, and what we really need is support in doing that. So, that's really all I wanted to say tonight, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Next person is Alberto Allegria, AOB-E, Thanksgiving day off for classified and student-to-teacher ratio.
Good evening, members of the board, President Lehman, Superintendent Gonzalez, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Alberto Allegria, the proud president of the Association of Brownsville Educators. Tonight, I bring an old concern before you, but with a solution. In past years, we, the Association of Brownsville Educators, have come before you to ask of all, that all BISD classified employees working Friday after Thanksgiving be given off. I can stand here and give you cosmic reasons as to why we should give the Friday after Thanksgiving day off, however, I will not. Instead, the only reason why we should give them the day off is so they too can be with their families on such a special day of sharing. We, the Association of Brownsville Educators, like to ask administration to really look into recommending this day, the Friday after Thanksgiving, a permanent day off, or make it school policy for next year. We are willing to work with the administration and the school board to formulate a definite assurance that we can come together to give the classified in our districts, district more, for they are the ones that receive the least. Join us in making this issue a reality. Security at our campuses is important during the upcoming holidays, however, can we accomplish this situation with just having a skeleton crew to cover all of our campuses and not utilize so many employees? Again, these are the issues that our classified employees are faced with. Your decision will determine whether they spend quality time with their family, with their families or not. The last time George Borrego, our regional president, spoke to you in regards to the student-to-teacher ratio, well, it continues to be a very important issue, not only to the teachers, but also to the success of our students. I, as leader of the Association of Brownsville Educators, have come to a conclusion that the reason that our students are not successful, or not achieving, or not achieving to their potential, is because of the class size. We know that the class size is a critical student component to learning. We must continue to work on this very critical area in order to meet standardized testing criteria. The core subjects area should be looked at first, and then immediately look at our non-core subjects. We must not allow or submit to large class sizes, because all we are doing is processing the students like in a factory, and not teaching the subject to our students. We must give our students a chance to succeed and accomplish their goals. We, the Association of Brownsville Educators, applaud the administration for recommending, and the school board for approving, the hiring of retired teachers. These master teachers bring a vast wealth of knowledge, and we, as a district, must take advantage of their experience. It is vital that we look into this matter as soon as possible and reduce class sizes so that teachers can teach and students can learn. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you, sir. That concludes the public comment period. We move on to nine, closed meeting, as pursued into the Texas Government Code, section 551.074 and 551.082. Board moves into closed meeting to hear a level-three board review and grievance, three, level-three grievance of Marco Garcia, number 005-das-zero-six slash oh-seven. Board reconvenes after closed meeting to take up item four, board action on level-three grievance, Marco Garcia, number 005-das-zero-six slash oh-seven. Motion?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I move to reinstate the employee and grant the level-three grievance and authorize the superintendent to set the appropriate conditions regarding the reinstatement.
Motion to reinstate is read, is our second.
Second.
Motion and second, as read, all those in favor signify by raising your hands, say an aye. A motion carries. Move on to consent agenda. I've received a list from my colleagues indicating that there is no need to discuss or deliberation on the following agenda items. Item A, or under A, recommend approval of the following general function items, payments, item five, six, eight, nine, eleven. Under B, recommend approval of the following contract and agreements, item twelve, item fifteen. Under C, recommend approval of the following requests for qualifications, yes, sir.
I think we're going to need to consider sixteen.
No, sir, no, sir, it's for discussion. Okay, let me repeat B. Twelve, fifteen, and move on to C, recommend approval of the following requests for qualifications, RFQs, seventeen, eighteen. Under nine, closed meeting, A, Personnel Matters, number nineteen, twenty-one. Is there a motion to approve, as read?
Move.
Second. Motion and second to approve the consent agenda items, as read, all those in favor, signify by raising your hands, say an aye.
Aye.
A motion carries. Move on to take up A, recommend approval of the following general function items, seven, recommend approval to pay Rose Lawrence, Brownsville, Texas, to provide training and implementation of behavioral intervention strategies and program monitoring, and the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand for the two thousand and six, two thousand and seven school year from budgeted categorical fund services to be rendered subject to district's needs and funding. Motion to approve. Motion to approve. Motion dies. Move on to ten, recommend approval to pay Sue Berlin, Spring, Texas, to provide training, assessment, and implementation of assistive technology services not to exceed twenty-five thousand from budgeted categorical funds for the two thousand and six, two thousand and seven school year, services to be rendered subject to the district's needs and funding. Is there a motion to approve? There's a motion to approve, motion dies. Move on to B, recommend approval of the following contract and agreements, thirteen, recommend approval to enter into a letter of understanding with Automotive Youth Educational Systems Incorporated, AYES, Troy, Michigan, for Gladys Porter High School at no cost to the district for the two thousand and six, two thousand and school years. There's a motion to approve.
Move.
Motion to approve item thirteen, is there a second?
I second.
Motion and second, discussion, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. A couple of years ago, I saw the presentation on this program, and the dealerships all participated, but I haven't seen any follow-up on this, and I'm very curious as to what sort of success we've had with that. We have, could we have?
Yes, thank you. Lehman, members of the board, Mr. Munoz, yes, we've had quite a bit of success, what happened, though, is that we lost a teacher, and now we have acquired a teacher back on this, that is actually able to teach these classes and work with the dealerships. We've worked with Look-Fruia Motors, Cardenas Motors, Don Johnson, Tippotex, Ed Payne, and right now, we have five, five of our graduates that are working with them, and if this is passed tonight, we'll have another three that will be trained with them, and will most likely be picked up by one of those dealerships when they get through. It's a very good program. The problem was that when we lost a teacher, we lost the program, so we're revitalizing our program, but it's a good program, and the dealerships are very excited about it, they work well with us.
Well, that's good. I was impressed by the presentation, I just wondered, you know, if we'd had continuity, and of course, we need continuity, so I'm glad that it's on its wheels again. I was just wondering, you know, related to this, I'd like to see, and perhaps you have some other programs, similar-type programs for vocational education in the future. I think that these sort of programs are excellent, and there's other areas that we might look at. I don't know if you have anything in mind at this point in time, or you will consider it.
Yes, as a matter of fact, I'm excited about this. We're doing a, we have a task force for dropout prevention and recovery, and one of the things that the principals are working along with the community members, is developing this type of programs in current technology, and doing partnerships with businesses in the community to be able to do apprenticeship programs with the different community businesses that we have. We're excited about this, we're going to expand our current technology program, and we're looking forward to really exploring different avenues, this plus other different areas, including electrical welding, plumbing, and this type of areas that kids would be interested in, of course, the health services areas, and be able to expand on those that we currently have, and bring in new ones, so, yeah, we're excited about that. And during the spring, we'll bring to the curriculum committee different areas that we're looking at for the fall implementation.
That's very good news, thank you.
Follow-up questions? Counselor, have you reviewed the letters of understanding?
Yes, sir, I have.
What does OEM stand for?
OEM, where are they?
All over the letters of understanding. Can't find a, an acronym for something, original parts?
Original equipment manufacturer.
I'm just curious, it was a trick question, okay. I'm just curious.
Page, Mr. Lehman?
Page one twelve, I mean, yeah, one twelve, one hundred and twelve. I'm just curious, too, maybe an automotive guy out there knows what OEM, has to do with replacement original parts, right?
Original equipment manufacturer.
Original equipment manufacturer? Okay, that's a good one, we'll take that one. Thank you. Motion and second has been made, all those in favor signify by raising your hands, say an aye.
Aye.
A motion carries. Item fourteen, recommend approval to enter into an agreement with the Texas Center for Educational Research, which will allocate Falk Middle School fifty-five thousand, forty-two dollars, to conduct an evaluation of a technology immersion pilot tip. Motion to approve.
Move.
Second. Motion and second to approve item fourteen, discussion, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. From what I could read, this fifty-five thousand dollars, and the, this motion is to approve a study of a program that we're going to enter into at Falk Middle School, and I would like to hear a discussion on the implementation of that program, what it's going to entail, where the resources are coming from, the equipment, the software, and any costs, and any comments they might have along that line. I think it's going to be a very interesting program, very challenging.
Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, members of the board. It is a very exciting, very interesting program that we have going on at Falk. What's happening at Falk is we received, and you all approved, a grant whereby every student, every teacher at Falk Middle School will be receiving a laptop, and it's part of the immersion program for technology. And what they're going to be doing, what this process is, is, okay, we've been working on how we're going to get the computers, we're working on training right now for teachers and staff as to how they're going to be using this, and how this is going to affect the teaching at the school, and the curriculum. So, therefore, based on that, now they say, well, we're going to give them to you, we have to find out if it works or not. So, this is part of the Texas Education Agency. TEA has said, okay, we're giving you all this, we've invested in Falk a lot of money by getting you laptops for every student and for every teacher. You're going to be totally immersed in technology now. So, they contracted with the Texas Center for Educational Research, that's TCER, and what they're going to do for the next two years-
And what they're going to do for the next two years is once those students get it, they're going to, we're going to be providing data for them. They're going to be tracking our students, how their scores are impacted, how they impact TOC scores, how they impact learning, and then they're going to put all this together. And the $55,000 that is here is flow-through money, actually to pay the Texas Center for Educational Research to report back to TEA about their investment in the program that we have, where we got all the computers for the students and teachers at Falk. This is how this program works. So it's a pilot program for immersion in technology. We were one of 13 schools in the whole state of Texas that got it. Falk was one of 13. That's great. And I'm looking forward to it. I'm excited to see how this, every student with a laptop and every teacher with a laptop is going to work. And what they're doing is, this is not our money. TA has given us this money to pay for the research to be done, to see how it impacts student learning.
And the computers as well?
The computers, it comes from a different fund.
Okay, but it's not local money?
It's not local money. None of it is local money. It's all state money.
Have, has the state, are they working with us with the software? Are we getting any help with our curriculum to meld these together?
The curriculum basically comes from us. Now, how we use the laptops to implement the curriculum is what the immersion program is all about. So the principal at Falk, along with the AA, which is Ms. Ayala, will be working, along with Berta Pena and her staff, will be working to see how this implementation of programs in, we using the laptops is going to work. Going to try, it's going to eliminate a lot of textbooks, a lot of materials. Everything will be done, just like Ms. Galan here, in the laptop. And they'll be able to carry those things home with them and back and be able to do a lot of work with them. It's a pilot program. It's going to be interesting. I'm sure that as we go through, we're going to improve on it. We'll start slowly and by the end of the two years, we hope we have it down. And if it works well, then the state will consider other schools throughout the state to go into the same program. So it's, we're one of 13 that is being piloted.
Well, hopefully, is the state going to assist us in this?
Yes.
In getting it up and going because?
They're already doing it. They're already providing the training for it.
Right.
So they're definitely hands-on on this one because it's important to them. Because if it works, then the next legislative session, the next biennium, they're going to have to see what they're going to do to get it into all schools.
Big bucks.
Yes, big bucks.
Thank you.
Additional comments? Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve item 14. All those in favor signify by raising hands, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Move on to item 16. Discussion, consideration and possible action to approve the operating and service contract with the Brownsville Public Utilities Board, PUB, as recommended by the energy consultant and general counsel. Discussion, we'll take on discussion. Mr. Gonzalez, you want to open up?
Sure.
And I know Ms. Galan has a question, so unless...
I just wanted an overview of the agreement.
Not a problem. I believe I, what we have been doing, and Mr. Driggers is here. And this is yours. What we're going to be doing is, Mr. Driggers has been working with the PUB concerning how to cut costs. And when we're looking at cutting costs, we're looking at how cost savings, more than anything else. So what we have done is developed a contract. We have just gotten an updated contract, which I will ask Mr. Saldana to look at and finalize for us. He has looked at the one that's already on your backup information and he's okay with that, which is going to fine-tweak it a little bit to reflect the actual numbers. And what we're going to be doing is, according to Mr. Driggers, and I think Ray Artella was there yesterday along with Mr. Sanchez and, I don't know, I don't know if Ms. Fox were able to attend or not, but I know that some of Mr. Artella's staff was there. And what they came up with was that they're going to do the termination of all monthly maintenance contracts for a cost savings of $122,779.80 per year. They're going to do the elimination of ratcheting for $30,000 savings per year. And they're going to do blanket easements at $6,000 per year. So when you look, when you look at the savings that they're going to be establishing, we're looking at about $158,700 savings throughout the year, just by implementing these. And what we need is to be able to ratify the contract, to be able to allow administration to go forth with this contract, to be able to produce this cost savings. This is a lot of work that's been done by staff and Mr. Driggers. And he's here. If you want to address any questions to him, he was kind enough to stay for the board meeting to see if you all had any questions. There's a lot of work that's been done out there by staff and Mr. Driggers to cut as many cost-saving measures as we can. $158,000 might not seem much, but it's a lot of money. It pays for a lot of utilities. It puts materials back into kids' areas. So we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Comments from the board? Yes, sir, Mr. Power.
Thank you, President Lehman. Mr. Gonzalez, I think that this is well overdue. I wish we would have done this five years ago, six years ago. I wish I would have known all this. But I think it's excellent that knowing that the substantial savings we're going to get from here on out.
That's right.
So I'm going to thank you and Mr. Driggers for this fine work.
We tried, Mr. Powers. We tried three years ago. We were accused of other things.
Yes, I'd like to remind everyone that this is, that this is just the beginning. We have the results of Mr. Driggers' studies have revealed a lot of cost savings possibilities. And we may have to invest small amounts of money relative to their payback, but we do not want to forego what we've invested in. And that is, we've identified a lot of areas that we can save a bunch of money, actually millions of dollars, in the next few years with a very small investment. So I urge us to continue working with Mr. Driggers and follow through with these projects.
Additional comments?
Yes, Mr. Gonzalez, could you read some of the other items there?
Sure. And there's other items that I didn't read out, but that was the main one. But PUB has forgiven over $30,000 in contracted balances at Hannah, Porter and Skinner. So that's a $30 savings that would be there. PUB will refund $16,000 in overcharged ratcheting fees. PUB will continue to own all electrical distribution facilities, primary and secondary. The PUB will not charge for routine maintenance inspections. The PUB will work with BISD to accomplish no more than one meter per school. Contract is for five years with unlimited one-year renewal options. Blanket easements will greatly reduce the time requirements for installation of portables. Future services and primary meeting will be negotiated on a case-by-case basis. Operations and scheduling will be coordinated to ensure efficient operations. An agreement is flexible and may be amended by the PUB CEO and BISD superintendent. So when we look at it, there's a lot more savings in there and all of you are absolutely correct. There's a lot more savings to come. We're continuing to work with PUB and other energy companies as well as what we've done in the past by bidding out and getting the best prices we can for electrical services has really, really reduced the cost of utilities in this district. And also, looking at all these cost-saving measures that have been introduced at the campuses with the consultant has suggested, has really reduced our energy costs. So I think we're working in the right direction and a lot of cost savings for the district.
Yes, I have one question. Follow-up, counselor? This is, we are, I guess we're approving the agreement or contract tonight?
Mr. Lehman, not the draft that was attached. The draft was merely for reference and illustrative purposes. There is a contract that we did receive late this afternoon.
I have one here, but I don't have it with me.
We just handed it to you.
Okay, but my question is, the last, since we're ratifying it tonight. Right. And the last statement, agreement is flexible and may be amended by PUB CEO and BISD superintendent. I have a problem with that. And I don't know if there's language in here.
I have not seen that particular contract, Mr. Lehman.
I would, all amendments should come to the board since it is a, it is a legal document and I don't want to give that flexibility to the superintendent per se, just to protect him in the event that any anyone do. It should be brought to the board.
Strictly a policy issue concerning one of the substantive terms in agreements. I don't know, what that'll probably end up doing is, if it is a change in the language as approved by PUB last night, it'll probably have to be bounced back to them for approval of that language.
Do in my Evelyn Woods real quick. Amendments. This contract may be amended from time to time and amended, or the amendments may be added. Such amendments and addendums will be required. Signature of the chief executive officer of each of the parties. These parties are the general manager, PUB, and the superintendent. So how would the board know that there are any changes?
They would not, sir. It's, like I said, it's a policy issue for you all to discuss and whatever you all want to do.
I just want to make sure the board...
It's up to you all.
Yeah, make sure they understand that the board understands that. Okay?
And ratified by the board.
Okay, I'd like to have that language there.
And ratified by the board.
Any additional comments? Yes, sir.
I had a question regarding the no more than one meter per school. What would be the impact or the savings if we were to accomplish that as far as no more than one meter per school?
Well, I'm not the expert, but Mr. Driggers is. So, Mr. Driggers, I'm glad you're here. Would you mind answering that question?
Absolutely. The typical savings that we have experienced range from about 18% up to 30%. So you could expect a minimum savings somewhere in the neighborhood of 18%. Now, PUB does have pretty relatively low cost per KW of demand, so it'd probably be nearer with, in the case of PUB, the 18 than it would the 30. And it depends also on how many meters you have per campus. More meters, the more savings.
Is there a timeline to be able to accomplish that, a realistic timetable or?
There is not a specific timeline. What we're working from is more of a priority list. Those that would reap the greatest savings are the ones that we're going to recommend doing first. But we will negotiate those changeovers to single meters per campus on a campus, by campus basis.
Thank you.
Driggers? Thank you. Additional comments by the board? There's a motion, well, no, I need a motion to approve item 16. I move to accept. The agreement with the condition that the board ratifies the addendums? Okay, there's a motion. Do I need, I need a second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve item 16 as discussed and read. All those in favor signify by raising hands, say an aye. Aye, motion carries. Move on, oh, Mr. Munoz, you had a comment. Did you want to interject?
Yes, before we go into closed meeting, I'd like to take this time to make a statement. And if you'll bear with me, I better read it, otherwise I'll leave something out. I wish to express my sincere thanks at having had the honor and privilege of having been afforded the opportunity to serve my community as a BISD trustee for these past three and a half years. I have served by the grace of God and at the will of the BISD electorate. Having been blessed with this opportunity, I am forever grateful. I am deeply thankful for the support of my wife and family. They have nurtured and supported me in my endeavors to serve BISD in what I think were the best interests of our community as a whole. I wish to thank my friends and supporters for their encouragement and support. I'm sorry that it did not prevail in my reelection effort, but I tried as best I was able and was bested by a challenger who has earned a chance to serve with honor and for the interests of our children and community. The many kind and insightful calls I have received after the election have dispelled any doubts I may have had regarding my tenure at BISD. I have enjoyed meeting and working with the BISD administration and staff and thank them for their help, professionalism and kind patience. They have been patient. I am encouraged and impressed by the quality, dedication and caliber of the BISD personnel, both certified and classified. I am convinced that our new superintendent is, at this point in time, the most qualified and the best fit for our district, bar none. He exceeds all the requirements prescribed by policy and statute. His diverse experience in education business and above all, his personality and leadership skills should ensure his success as superintendent of BISD schools. He is at the apex of his career and capabilities, knows and understands the district and has his finger on its pulse. It is alive and well. And with the support of the board of trustees and the community, he will do very well, as will the district. I will very much miss the discussion, honest banter and camaraderie with my colleagues and staff. I'm sorry that I will not be able to follow through with my projects and vision for the district. I do know that this dreadnought called BISD will survive all of us regardless of our mistakes and at times petty and self-serving interests, mine included. I will above all miss the high honor and pleasure of participating in BISD graduation ceremonies. Sharing one of the most important moments in a young person's life is indeed a very high honor and privilege. Again, thank you and may God bless, guide and protect you, one and all. Thank you.
I want to say that it's been a pretty good ride for three and a half years working with you, Mr. Munoz. I know when you first came in, you were doubtful. You had your reservations, but it's good to see a convert turn for the right reasons. So may you see good fortune in the future and who knows, next year is a different thing. So additional comments? Okay, once again, good luck and I want to congratulate, we have Mr. Ruben Cortez in the audience, so congratulations. We look forward to seeing you next week and do that induction for you. Thank you. Move on to closed meeting, item 11A, Personal Matters, 920, excuse me, I'm sorry. Okay, as pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551071, 551072, 551074, 551082, and 551084, board goes into closed meetings to take on personal matters, real property and other issues.